...call this meeting of the Lancaster Central School District Board. Please rise and declare your flag and your name and standing room home. The flag is lifted. The United States of America, to your father, to Spain, to your country, to your God, and to his soul. Tonight we'd like to keep in our thoughts and prayers with the family of Thomas Kertovich, who transferred past ways. 4.0 presentations. We have not this evening. 5.0 correspondence. We received an email from Mary Jo Diaw. Approval of minutes 6.0. 6.1, I have a motion to accept regular session minutes from our March 14 meeting. Any questions or comments?
I have no comments. In reviewing them, I noticed that when we do our board reports, there's no detail as to what it is that we talk about. I know this is past tense, but maybe we could see a little bit more detail in what it is that we share with board. I mean, if you look at these later, it's kind of useful because it just says, "Mrs. Christopher, Mr. Uteig, whatever quote, but..." Just a thought.
Mr. Janek, would it be possible made with bullet points as to what board members report on? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, I have a motion to accept the budget work session minutes from April 4, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Is there anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
No one.
Thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
No one will report.
Thank you. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Thank you. 8.0, board reports. Does anyone on the board have anything to report?
Mr. Uteig, I just want to indicate that on April 8, I attended CKS all annual fundraiser, and as usual, the students were excellent. The parents appreciated the music policy that we had, and really, really great time. Very positive.
Anyone else? I'd like to report. Since our last meeting, my children, who are students at Lancaster Middle School, my daughter Vanessa's an eighth grader there, and my son is a junior at Lancaster High School, Patrick Jr., they've had the wonderful opportunity to participate in enriching and fulfilling events through those two great schools. My daughter was very proud to travel to Quebec City with the French Club and had the opportunity to immerse herself in French Canadian culture, speak the language, visit historic documents and venues that she had researched as part of her studies in French class. My son attended a leadership conference at Disney in Orlando, Florida with Leadership Academy. He and his classmates participated in Disney's Leadership Academy workshop and had an audience with some of the Disney Imagineers as well. Patrick Jr. also then traveled to New York City with the Langue Concert Choir and had an opportunity to perform in St. John and Divine Cathedral, as well as participating in a musical clinic with the director of Hofstra's University's Choral Program. These are just a few of the fine examples of academic and cultural opportunities available to students of Lancaster School District, and it is a testament to the dedication of our faculty and administrators, which make Lancaster schools a great place for students and their families. My children never wanted to attend anywhere else, and it's clear to see why. 9.0 superintendent's. Sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Gallagher. Right ahead.
One thing I wanted to report, I was able to attend the beginning of the concert season. If you're not aware, this break concert season started yesterday throughout the district. I was able to attend the fifth grade orchestra, fourth grade band concert yesterday at William Street, and if you're looking online, they have a scheduled events for not only William Street, but the middle school as well as the high school for various concert and chorus events. I encourage many of you to take part, and I know many of you people showed up yesterday. I believe two or three of them. It's a great opportunity of dedication to the music department of the school district, as well as the parents who have encouraged their children to be part of that program. In fact, they have so many fourth graders that they have three separate bands at William Street, so it's a testament to the recruitment of those students and the parents for encouraging their children to get involved in those opportunities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gallagher. 9.0 superintendent's report, Dr. Val.
Thank you, Mr. Uteig. I just want to first remind everyone that there's an Internet Safety Prevention presentation, Internet Safety Presentation on April 26, 2016, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock at Lancaster Middle School. It'll be featuring speakers from the FBI, missing and exploited children, and Lancaster Police Department. Please encourage people to attend. We offered these things in the past. We offered one at the middle school before, and at different times, and it's been sparsely attended. I think these are great programs, we have great speakers and everything else, so if you have an opportunity, please try to take the opportunity to get there. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised with the information, and it's a valuable event. I also wanted to report that Mr. Kilgore, the vice president of LEAF, spoke at the last board meeting about the LEAF paper campaign. Since that time, he had donation forms and the advertising flyers for LEAF paper campaign out there. They will be circulated, have, and will be circulating in the near future throughout the community and district. This has been in planning stages for months now, and LEAF is rolling it out. I know that many people are interested and excited about it. Please consider taking a look at the donation forms and the LEAF or paper campaign, and buying one for yourself, your family member, loved one, or whatever else. I think it's a great project in concert with the school district. There are always special students doing special things throughout our community, but I thought I would highlight a middle school student, Victoria Lorenz, who led a donation campaign for children at Roswell Park. You may have seen it, it was in the news, and also in the Lancaster paper. She was assisted by other leadership students at the middle school, along with Veronica Strong, Riley Foley, Aubrey Monk, and many others. It was in the paper, and they collected a variety of items, including paintbrushes, smocks, coloring books, crayons, margaritas journals, glitter, glue, tape, et cetera. It was a student-led project, and it was called Art for Start, and resulted in the donation of five large bins worth of crafting supplies to Carly's Club at Roswell Park. Again, just another example of Lancaster tradition of service and kindness in action. We're really pleased to mention, we've mentioned this before, but it keeps on taking steps further, Mr. Sean Konanski, who I think presented at the last board meeting. He's a William Street Technology teacher, who we put up for New York State Teacher of the Year, and has received word that he's now a top 10 finalist. And that's a real note goes to him and the school district, so congratulations to Mr. Konanski. We're very proud of him and all he does. And finally, just a little flavor of some of the professional development that's happened. It's called tech tasting. Across the district for about eight or more years now, we've been working to provide professional development to teachers and staff in a variety of venues. This week, high school teachers in concert with the High School Instructional Technology Department, Jill Santoro, and approximately 20 tech expert student ambassadors collaborated on what we call the quote-unquote "tech tasting." The menu included topics such as Google tips and tricks, Google Hangouts, Google Forms, Google Cardboard, NearPod, EdPuzzle, BrainPop, Flickers, Kahoot, and many others. Teachers using these applications demonstrated them to their colleagues, inviting questions and collaboration. Because there were so many sessions, each one was small in size, and the teachers readily participated. This was not only a fine professional development opportunity, but it represented a cultural change. Teachers shared with their colleagues and became quasi mentors specific to the applications. Their willingness to share and collaborate is significant and represents only one of the reasons that Lancaster schools are great and becoming greater. So those are a couple of things that I just wanted to mention, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. We'll be on to 10.0 business. 10.1, just an update Mrs. Christopher had brought up that she had seen about cyber insurance, and wanted to know if the district had that coverage. Mrs. Phillips and Dr. Valley have assured us that we do have the sufficient coverage. Always good to have, just a point of clarification. Anyone else have old business they'd like to bring up?
Hi, Jeff. Last month, as you know, we talked about the veteran parking spot, and while I realize that we have voted to put it under four goals, in light of that sin with all the media attention, as well as correspondence I've received, I know you all received something in front of you this evening, both emails and so on, that's not to people who are here tonight to discuss this with us. I would like you to reconsider putting this off until September. Consider doing it now.
I'd like to respond. I've written something up to sort of add a couple of points of clarification to our discussion. At our last board meeting, we did have a conversation about the idea brought forward regarding parking spaces in school buildings specifically reserving one spot for a vet. I'd like to state that everyone on this board asserted that they have a great respect for veterans and their service to our country. Specifically, my grandfather, my father, and my father-in-law are all veterans. Each of us had brought up that we thought it was a good idea. During that discussion, I had also put forth that the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education recently chose to honor our veterans by becoming one of the first two school districts in the county to adopt the Veterans' Tax Exemption. Our exemption matches the levels used by Erie County and the town and village of Lancaster, starting at $18,000 for a non-combat veteran to as much as $60,000 exemption for a disabled veteran. It was not a requirement of this district to approve the exemption, and there are still districts in Western New York that have not done so. So my point is, any assertion that a member of this school board lacks respect for veterans is simply not true, and I take exception to anyone who makes the claim and would have to question their motive for doing so. And in the interest of transparency and to address erroneous information, I have seen shared in the local media and via letters to the editor, I would like to refer to the minutes from last month's meeting. The minutes read directly, "A conversation took place regarding parking spaces at the buildings reserved for veterans. I then moved, seconded by Mr. Sage, to discuss veteran parking spots at each of our buildings at the next board retreat and to consider it in making of board votes for next year." The vote in motion, the vote on motion was five ayes, two nays. Mrs. Christopher and Mrs. Dipchinsky voted down the motion. The motion was approved. Since the motion was approved, we will be looking into this initiative this summer as far as creating our board goals for the next school year. Since the last meeting, very important, I've talked to veterans who have given me different points of view on this idea. Each of those points of view I look forward to sharing with the board at our retreat this summer. I also heard several questions, specifically, who's going to police this spot? What about other groups that deserve being honored as well? How does this relate to our buildings and grounds people? Who will maintain this spot in the future? It's been mentioned by some people that perhaps the students could maintain, or outside people can come in. Those are questions we have to have answered before we put things in motion. I also stated this board puts together goals for the year, and we work towards those goals all year long, and this is a good idea. We respect veterans. The fact that it did not meet with Mrs. Christopher or Mrs. Dipchinsky's timetable really does not mean that we didn't think it was a good idea, that we weren't considering it. Anyone who knows about boards of education, policies of organizations, things need to be gone through their due diligence in order to do things right. So what I encourage board members to do between now and the board retreat, which is what I will still move and support doing, talk to veterans and hear what they have to say. We should seek out suggestions, concerns, questions, counter-proposals, adaptations to the proposal, and we should bring those to the table for discussion. And tonight, we will hear from some people who have signed up to speak on this topic. Giving more credence to my argument that we need time to thoughtfully examine this proposal before putting a plan in action. Our veterans deserve better than to be used and employed to attempt to vilify members of this school board. I would be glad to speak with anyone here tonight about this issue after the meeting. So in terms of supporting veterans and moving forward on this idea, I would reiterate my assertion that we need to make it part of our board goals and work towards a logical, fair, responsible plan before we move forward.
I'd like to make a comment on the B2, what you just said. First of all, the motion was voted down to wait. It wasn't voted down to do it. I want to make that clear to anyone who's here for the first time tonight. We did vote down waiting till September to do it, because I don't think it takes six months to make a decision. We all know decisions are made very quickly around here, and it doesn't take six months.
I'm not sure what you mean. Bye. Sir, excuse me. Our policy is that there's no shouting out, there's no crass remarks. This is a meeting being held in public, not a public meeting. So I'll thank you to respect our policy, please. Mrs. Christopher, we have one motion that was made.
Can I finish my...
I was just, I was trying to understand the point you were making. We only have one motion.
We've made lots of decisions a lot quicker than this. We don't need to put it off and discuss, and that's for what? I can answer every one of your questions. Who's going to please it? We don't need to please then. It doesn't need to be pleased. Who's going to be responsible for it? We can, that's easy. We have people lined up to be responsible for it. Anything we do have presented, I'd counteroffer. I've told you exactly, we have paint donated, we have signs donated, we have volunteers to do it. We heard excuses like insurance. If we do it for this group, we have to do it for other groups. Are you kidding me? The reason you're sitting at the table is because of those people. We don't need to sit and entertain every single group. What other group do we need to entertain a parking spot for? We have handicapped spots, we have faculty spots, we have students' spots, and we can't throw one spot, green red for veterans? Patrick, you want us to wait for board goals. I know that this last year's board goals, I didn't have any part of those board goals. I showed up to a meeting where they were already planned out for me, so what part of board goals is this board going to do? The board president, superintendent create the board goals for the rest of us. So putting this as something we want to do, I don't know that it's going to end up there. I see no reason to wait. All of these questions you ask can be answered in minutes. Sweet Home is approved in one meeting. Set down to this awesome idea, let's do it. Rest in peace. We're waiting. They're waiting for one more month for us to act together before they go ahead and do it. Why did they not have a problem? And we have crossed our p's and dotted our i's. It's ridiculous at this point. It's all, it's just because I came up with this idea, and you want it, you just want to shoot it down.
Mrs. Christopher, I misrepresented a couple of things. Sweet Home has not approved this.
They absolutely have.
Can you produce...
Yes, I can. I can bring a member of the board on the phone in just a minute.
Please do so. Not right now, of course. The second thing is, everyone had the opportunity to voice their opinion on the board goals, and the board goals are not set in stone until after the retreat. The board president and the administrators make suggestions as to things that might be aligned with the school board and the best interest of the students who attend all of our schools, but that's a misrepresentation to say that they're dictated to us.
When were we asked to put our thoughts back?
In the correspondence with the retreat, people are welcome to make suggestions, and that is what the retreat is for. The retreat is for, would you let me finish, please? The retreat is for bringing up ideas, discussing them, debating back and forth, looking at all the different contingencies and all the issues that may come up with respect to board goals, and then determining whether they're realistic, and they are fair. And that's what we're looking for.
We've got 15 minutes on board goals in a seven-hour meeting.
And I can tell you what the other time was dominated with as well. So, again, you know, I've heard a lot of talk in, you know, the local media and print media, or I've read a lot of what's being said, and I've heard a lot of things that are being put out there. What I want to make sure this public knows is that this Board of Education supports veterans, and we all, to a person, thought this was a good idea. The only thing that was in disagreement was the due diligence that we will practice when we try to put this plan together, and the timing of the issue. And I don't think that is something where it caused us to rush forward.
It's going to wait a whole year. You have to do it in September. When would you like to meet? When the buses are out, when the weather's cold? We have to wait till next July. So it's going to wait a whole year for due diligence.
One thing that was discussed in the last meeting, and one thing that should be, is one of the youth committee meetings, we discussed all the construction that's taking place at this building.
You did go around the construction.
Okay, well, the entire district is moving the administrative offices, the athletic department offices are being moved out of this building. So there's an issue of bringing people into the construction zone to have these spots. So it's a lot, and you're a part of it, a union, and there are union and contractual discussions that need to take place before we just set out. We can't just say, well, someone's going to do it because they're volunteers, because we're stepping on the toes of those people we have hired to do the building and grounds of this district. We can't just say, well, we have people who are going to volunteer to do their job, because we may be staring down agreements, and as a union member, I know you would understand that. So I think we're all...
Did anybody try to talk to our committee department? Did anyone have an issue with any of the first ones?
Well, we didn't even have that conversation, because you wanted to have a red rubber stamp at that moment.
I didn't want a rubber stamp. I don't want it to take months.
Okay, no one said you're...
There's no reason to wait till September. Let's talk about it tonight.
Well, there was no reason to rush into it either.
And then let's put it in motion in July. Why are we waiting till September? We can work out maintenance, insurance, this excuse and that excuse between April and July.
Well, your excuses are our reasons, so you have...
That's you.
Okay, well, then, okay.
I think one important thing that we have to remember right now is, we have a budget to present. We have a budget to put up in front of the public, and we need to make sure that that budget is passed for the students in this district. I've sat here for the last year, and what have we talked about? We have not once talked about the kids in this district, and what is best for the kids in this district. And we need to get back to the basics, and the basics is the kids. They're what is important in this district. How are they going to achieve? What are they going to be? What are they going to do? Where are they going? When they leave this high school, will they be educated enough to stand on their own two feet? That's the question I want to know. Everybody, I love veterans. My brother fought in Vietnam. Today, you can make signs like, "Wah wah wah, this is McKay," but today, my brother suffers from fighting in the Vietnam War. He's a rude man. He was a brave man, and he would say, "Marie, you do what is right, and you've always honored the veterans." My father fought in World War II. He earned a Purple Heart. My father-in-law was a decorated veteran. He earned many, many medals. So don't sit there and tell us that we don't honor the veterans, because we do. But our real job up here is to get these kids educated so they can be the ones that lead this country. That's what I want, and I believe that the rest of the board members want that.
Maria, I never said that you don't honor veterans. I think there's no reason to. That's what I said.
We got projects going on, Mrs. Christopher. We need to complete those projects within the district. We have parking lots that are going to be repaid. Why can't we wait? And why can't we talk about this and make sure that we do it right? We're not rushing into it.
We can wait until the construction's over. We don't have to wait till next July. Then what's next July going to be? More construction? We do it every year. We can talk about it in September, and we can... September is always beautiful. October is always beautiful. We can always pay, invest what they want.
I'd like to make a comment. I mean, obviously, it's clear to anyone who's attended our meetings this year, as it has been clear to me, there's a lack of trust on this board. I'm glad you agree. Will you bring on something, Mrs. Christopher? The fact of the matter remains...
That's good.
Would you allow me to speak? We have to do something about this. Absolutely. And what I think everyone on this board wants is what's best for our students, and we want to concentrate on teaching and instruction and student life and culture, and we don't want to be hung up on these things. So I apologize to our community that this has been such a divisive board mission, and you know, because I think the people of Lancaster are tired of it, and I think as well they should be. But what we need to do is define compromise and have discussion that's respectful to all different points of view. And there are many different points of view. There's seven different points of view on this board, and that's when we give the vote. So the fact that all of the questions, or you think all of the questions can be answered, that's simply your opinion. There's a lot of things that would need to be consulted, would need to consult outside parties or people within our school district in order to move forward on something like this. So to make the assertion that we shot it down is because it comes from you, you may believe that.
Absolutely.
I'd also like to assert that, if you would let me have it, I'm also not going to agree with something just because you insist. So that's not board policy, and that's not...
That's how I asked you to do it. Tell me the worst...
Go ahead. Okay. Can I add a question? Go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I want to wait on this issue because I'm not sure yet that parking spaces are the best way to honor our veterans. You know, last year, my father-in-law got to go into one of the elementary buildings for a flag base ceremony. They invited a family member for each kid that's a veteran that could come in. That's the type of thing that I think that veterans would really like. Now, if, you know, we research and a majority of the veterans in this community want parking spaces, then that's what I'm going to vote for. But I do want to wait, and I want to see what veterans really want. Is this really the best thing for the veterans, while also accounting for the other people in the district? But I can tell you right now that if we do the research and an overwhelming majority of veterans say, yeah, parking spots is definitely what we want, then let's do it.
Are you saying that you want to do it an overwhelming amount of the people in this community? You want, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Oh. Okay. Go ahead.
So where is that comment about...
You know exactly what that comment is.
This goes against my assertion that everything is not a...
Now you want to listen to...
Everything is not a...
Now you want to listen to... Now, we can't see the parking lot, so we can't go...
We need to move forward.
Oh. I'd like to... Can I say something to you during your...
Go ahead. Give us your insight.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Please give us your insight.
You talked about division of this board, and you talked about giving and receiving respect, but you just said a second ago to the peers of your board and the public, and insinuated that Mrs. Christopher, seeing this initiative, and I seconded the initiative, to vilify people on this board.
That's obvious.
That is what you said. That is what you said. And to Mr. Sage, a majority of the board, and you know, the majority of the community, is that how you really want to make that decision? You don't think there's already a majority of veterans that appreciate that, that the gesture?
If given the option for something else, they may prefer that.
And giving kids an opportunity to perform a civic duty, to honor the best?
Absolutely, but I just don't know if the parking lot is really the best idea.
Do you have another idea?
I do not.
Good to see.
Okay, so we have a motion that was approved, and we will be discussing that in our board retreat. 11.0 new business, 11.1 personnel items, 11.1.1. I have a motion to accept personnel changes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2 education items, 11.2.1. I have a motion to accept Committee on Special Education's report.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. So moved. Twelve point O, business and financial items. Twelve point one, the financial items. Could I have a motion to accept?
Seven.
Uh, I'm sorry. Eleven point two, point two. Committee on preschool and special education. Could I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point O, business and financial items. Twelve point one, could I have a motion to accept the financial items?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point two, policy adoption, eighty-two eleven for prevention instruction. Could I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point three, twelve point four, and twelve point five are from Information Illinois. It's second policy reading for sixty-one seventy, safety of students. Policy first reading for fifty-six thirty, facilities inspection, operation, and maintenance. And policy first reading seventy-three sixteen, student use of personal electronic devices. Those will be voted on in a future meeting. Twelve point six, bond issue and change orders. Could I have a motion to accept the change order?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point seven, contract with physician services for employers of Accusar. Could I have a motion to accept the contract?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eight, a motion to accept the contract between the district and visual design composition, Mr. Joseph Patruzy.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point nine, could I have a motion to accept the bid extension for tender plans?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point ten, could I have a motion to accept service operating reports for February two thousand sixteen?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point eleven, could I have a motion to accept the contract between the management advisory group and the school district?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point twelve, could I have a motion to accept the contract between the district and Sweet Home Central School District?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point one, three, could I have a motion to accept the Erie One Bosse's budget and board seats?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Uteck, I'd just like to place on record, this Bosse and Mr. Carr, who are running for reelection, to Bosse's have an extraordinary job with the children of Western New York. Erie One Bosse's in the district. Mr. Carr lives there for thirty-six years also, is a member of the Southern School Board. This Bosse, he'll do thirteen, fourteen years. This community is very fortunate, they have individuals like that who care about their children, and have given all these hours and years for the benefit of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point one, four, could I have a motion to accept the appointment of election workers?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point one, five, could I have a motion to accept two thousand sixteen, seventeen budget proposal?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Twelve point one, six, property tax report card. Could I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. Moving on to thirteen point O, public hearing. Welcome to all who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is the time set aside for public hearing, the time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person who registered for policy fifteen, fourteen is given up for five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. This policy will be strictly enforced, and anyone violating the policy will be procluded from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. First on the list this evening is Mr. Bob Zadkowski, three eighty-seven Schwartz Road. Mr. Zadkowski.
Can you hear me? My name's Robert Zadkowski, three eighty-seven Schwartz Road, Lancaster, New York. I'm a veteran, a disabled veteran, a hundred percent, and I'd like to speak on this. Can you hear me, Brandon? No. How about... Can you hear me now? I... Last year, the board members that were on last year, the superintendent, they voted in our tax break. That was plenty to give to the veterans. Is there a lot of veterans here tonight? No, just one veteran.
Stand up.
I go to VA hospital at least three times a week. I've asked other veterans about this red square in parking lot. They say whoever came up with it, it was a great idea. But thinking about it, it's not a good idea. I don't know how much time you spend thinking about what you're doing. One spot in every school, it's ridiculous. I'm sorry, I'm not putting you down, but nobody really thought this out. I was thinking, as another board member, saying, "There's something else we could do. We could put a small monument by the flag, saying those who we lost, students that we lost in the wars, and that we have lost." When I went to school here, a lot of my friends died in Vietnam. So I just want to thank the board members for giving us our tax break last year. And when I was on a board, I didn't see this. We never had arguments like this. I see a cloud over this board. I don't... What's going on? I'm embarrassed, I really am. I can't believe what's going on. We have one of the best superintendents around this Lancaster. People are wanting the Lancaster because of that man right there, Dr. Belk. And I wish people would respect him a little more, a lot more. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? I want to start off by saying that I consider myself extremely lucky. Not many people get to meet or thank our military heroes, but I was raised by them. Both my parents, my godfather, many uncles, many cousins, and friends are currently enlisted or veterans of varying rights. My family and friends willingly signed up to do what others do not have the courage or the physical ability to do, defend our country. These are selfless people who are willing to sacrifice their lives for us. They do this because they love our country and want to preserve our freedoms. I attended the last board meeting, and if I was able to speak during the public hearing, before needing to call at three that day, I would have. After going home and thinking about it, which was recommended by this school board in the past meeting, I'm no less disgusted today than I was a month ago. I am appalled by the excuses provided regarding this spot. Mrs. Christopher was able to secure donations for the supplies, volunteers to paint the spots, and even had someone willing to pay the maintenance staff's salary if volunteers were not allowed to do this. There's just been so many... It's just been disrespectful. And you've disrespected many of the military members of our community. The first thing that we have to... If we do this for veterans, we may have to do this for other groups. No! I think it's poor judgment to compare our veterans, who fought for our freedoms, to other groups. Veterans have done more for our country than any other group, and are treated very poorly by our government and civilians for their contributions. Student parking at the high school is highly sought out, and we shouldn't take a space away from the students. Well, this spot should be in the front of the school, and therefore, not taking a space away from the students. And even if the high school spot needed to be figured out more, we could have moved forward with the other schools. There could be a liability issue with painting the spots. I understand that, and I know that needs to be looked into, but Mike or Jamie could have had that done by the end of the week, as was suggested. Another option would have been to have volunteers sign a waiver. Painting and maintaining the spots would be the maintenance department's job, and we shouldn't add to their workload. You have volunteers willing to do this work, and someone even offering to pay the wages of the maintenance staff if necessary. Also, wouldn't this be a great civics project for some of our students? We should wait and see if other schools are going to do this first. Why? Why would you wait instead of paving the way? This should be a board goal for next year. This is not a goal I want my elected school board to be working on, but there are many other issues in these schools that need to be addressed. Painting it red could bring back negative memories to our veterans. This is ludicrous. People wear red to remember everyone deployed, R-E-D. Team Red White Blue, a veteran and civilian running club, had a red shirt. The Marine flag is red. And also, the Marine Corps Marathon, which has a lottery system to get into with over twenty-five thousand people trying to get into this, would not have given me a long-sleeved, red participant shirt, or a medal with a red ribbon and a red wheel on it if this was a trigger to our veterans. Next one, veterans are not complaining about having a spot, and it would be more if it were student-driven. Come on, you would rather be reactive instead of proactive? Let's get down to this, this board is divided. And any ideas from Mrs. Christopher or Mrs. Dvichinsky are going to be turned on. I find it remarkable that this idea is meeting many ridiculous excuses, solely because of the person who expressed it. If a complaint is what you need to move forward with this, mark this as my formal complaint. Our veterans are deserving of any and every recognition we can provide to them. Unless you have ever walked in a soldier's shoes, you have no clue what they have had to deal with. None of you are veterans. None of you signed up to put your lives on the line for our country. If not for them, many of you wouldn't be here today and have the luxuries you enjoy. Right now, there are thousands of soldiers deployed, many not knowing if they will live to see tomorrow. Yet here you sit in the conference of Lancaster, New York, putting up every excuse you can think of to put a stop to this recognition. Put aside your differences and make it happen.
James Wire, three seventy-four one Walden Avenue, Lieutenant Colonel Matt Urban, VFW
My name is James Wire. I'm the commander of, as they say in the Senate, Commander Urban, VFW Post on Walden I totally... I also am a disabled veteran. I totally agree, disagree with Bob for what he said, that he's happy. I'm not here to argue. I'm not anything political. I just think you people have gone totally out of your way of just for, just to have a parking spot. It's unbelievable. Some of you people have an agenda that's totally my model. As the face, Mr. Sage, if he needs to get petitions, I could get him hundreds, hundreds of petitions, saying that we would love to have him, just to keep calm. For Mr. Uteck saying that he thinks because his father and grandfather and great-grandfather was in the service, he realizes what it is. If you've never been in contact or combat, please, don't insult us about saying you know what it is. We are veterans. We aren't asking for nothing. If it's such a big item that you cannot give one and set aside your differences, shame on you. I don't want to make it political, I'm trying not to, but it hurts to think... What we do is our VFW post. We have giving to every donated our building. We do it for the marching band of our school. We give to the wrestling school when they have to raise funds. We gave it to the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, seniors. We don't care who we give it to. We give it to put the community together. Right now, it looks like you're trying to put everybody, and I'm talking about everybody. Everybody has the agenda. Let's get together, shake hands, put our differences aside, and just put in one. It isn't gonna kill anybody. Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Dan Rossi from sixty-one thirty-six Blossom Court, Clarence.
Hi. I speak to you as a twenty-one-year veteran of Lancaster Central School District. I've proudly taught in this school for two decades, am a social studies teacher, currently teaching AP Psychology. It's been a privilege to work here and work with many of your children. And I'm also a proud Air Force veteran, who served as a Staff Sergeant on active duty, as well as the National Guard and the Reserve, in times of peace and in times of war. I'd like to just address some of the concerns that were brought out in Lancaster meeting. Some people indicated, for instance, that there was a concern with student parking. This was mentioned already before, but maybe another way of looking at it. I share the view of the board, whether they talked about putting the students first and making sure that we use these as teachable moments. And one of the things I would state is that with regard to student parking, parking being a premium, the students do know that parking at the high school is a privilege that they actually do literally pay for, and they are not here to get in this spot. I would ask that we use this as a teachable moment and let the students know that we, as a community and as a school, have our priorities straight and promote the values that we share regarding the restrictions that we have those who serve. Regarding insurance concerns and possible liability, I'm not a lawyer, I know some of you are, but my thought would be that the community and groups in the school would risk the chance of being considered shunning volunteerism. And if that were the case, then we'd have to be really concerned with all the guest speakers we've had in the past, and the classes so much richer for their presence, volunteering their time to come in and provide what they've learned to the students. Also, I'd also be concerned with the parents that have volunteered time and time again to make this school district great. They come with their own free will, on their own time, and take the risks as they are when they step foot on the district's property and serve us well, and we appreciate their efforts. I would also like to address the painting and maintaining of the spot with regard to the maintenance department's jobs and whether or not we want to add to their workload. Again, I would suggest that we use this as a teachable moment and indicate that the students often learn through observational learning, and this would be a great opportunity for the staff to model what and who we truly support based on our priorities. Regarding the tax break, I appreciate any tax break I can get. Anybody that knows me will tell you that. However, I think we also need to understand that the tax break, while appreciated by many, doesn't really address the safety concern. And if we were to provide a parking spot for a veteran towards the front of the building, besides simply being a matter of showing respect, it would also be a practical situation in that it would lessen the risk of any elderly veteran taking a long walk, for instance, through the parking lot in the middle of the day in the wintertime, and reaching... through the parking lot in the middle of the day in the wintertime and reaching the front of the school so they could serve our children better and pass on the lessons they've learned, like I'd hate to see an elderly person or even someone even younger take a spill on the parking lot. As much effort is put into making sure this is a safe property, they would run less of a risk if they were physically closer to the building. I've had guest speakers in my social studies classes in the past that were in their eighties, and I've always encouraged them to park as close as they can to the front door. And in certain times of day, that's rather difficult because parking is at such a premium between the staff, the faculty, and the students. So I would simply make it a practical matter and maybe even avoid future litigation and make for the district to be sued by someone that felt broke a hip and then said, "Well, if they were a little closer to the building, maybe that wouldn't have happened." And then the last part about whether or not we should wait for the actions of other school districts. I'm really concerned with basically communicating to students that maybe we should put things off. I always tell my students that procrastination is not something you want to get involved in, you want to take things head-on and do them as expeditiously as possible, especially when the risks are low. If the risks are high, and we're talking about, you know, if we're talking about the Cuban Missile Crisis and making an expeditious decision resulting in World War III, that's one thing, but this might be something different. I simply scrolled down a comment on the paper that says, "When the risks are rather meat, when the risks are low, the cost of hesitation could be a whole lot higher." And I speak again to the safety concerns that I just voiced. I guess that's about it. I really do appreciate all the service that you provide this community, and I don't question anyone's patriotism, and I speak for no one but myself. Thank you.
Next up is Chris Krieger of A. Ronald Drive from Western New York Heroes Association.
Thank you very much for having me. I think pretty much our fellow brothers here in arms covered a lot, and I'm going to try not to touch on those same points again, but I believe Lancaster has a population of 10,279. I have a population of 179,000, which covers all of Western New York. Mary County alone of 62,000, which I think those same veterans, who's a high number that reside here in Lancaster, that will decide their next election position. So I think to be disrespectful and prolong parking position for disabled veterans who truly need them, when I've been in your parking lot on several occasions throughout the year, more than one year, and have never seen every one of those handicapped parking spots in Fulton, and if you're charging students to park, I'll pay for every veteran to park here for the next five years. And this is to you, Ms. McKay. I understand your brother was a Vietnam veteran, but I think for you to say he's ruined, shame on you. Because I myself, combat vet, 10 years, ground zero Bosnia, answer for the initial invasion in Iraq, you know, 304, Purple Heart, hit with a roadside bomb, would be the last person to say, "I'm ruined." And I think you should ask your brother that too, because I'm pretty sure he'd be ashamed. Last year, Western New York Heroes handed out over $130,000 to our men and women here in Western New York who needed financial assistance because our government failed. What has Lancaster done to prolong a decision on a parking spot that a bunch of monkeys can decide in five minutes? It doesn't take that much work and effort to put a handicapped or to put a disabled veteran's parking spot in your parking lot. And I mind you that Home Depot and Lowe's already beat you to it. And I believe as a board, you're supposed to lead, so stop following and start leading. I also... I know it's been touched on already with the red paint, and everyone's afraid of veterans the way we're going to react. If you think red paint is going to cause us to explode, blow up your schools, or come in shooting, once again, you're sad and mistaken, and you're ignorant to what veterans are really standing for, and what we've done for your ignorance to be what it is to them. There was a statement made earlier about a goal. You're looking to reach a goal. Last time I checked, reaching a goal meant, "Let's see how many kids we can get to graduate at the highest level each year." That's a goal. Making a goal to be a decision based on a parking spot, that's not a goal. So I'm not really sure what your goals are, but I will also do this. I am a president and a founder, and I make thousands of dollars a year in decision-making. Let me rephrase that, because I make decisions based on thousands of dollars a year to our community, okay? And we can solve in an hour and a half what it's clearly taken you guys more than a month, two months to decide on. Maybe you guys should come to one of my board meetings and see how a board is truly running. Thank you.
I'm Lynn Magistralling, 92 Lancaster High School graduate. Daughter is Lancaster alumni as well. My son is currently a sophomore here at Lancaster High School. I'm a 22-year, 90% disabled Iraq War veteran. My children were attending school here while I was in Iraq. My son, quite younger at the time, my daughter, younger as well. For them, trying to stay focused on school was quite challenging when they're worried about mom and where she is and what's going on. Hearing the stories back at home, hearing what's happening to our veterans that we're overseeing. A simple sign outside might have had some comfort to them. Doesn't have to be red paint. Doesn't have to be maintenance. It could be maintenance-free. A simple metal sign put out front, maybe a hundred bucks, whatever, I'll dig in my pocket and the low income that I make and find that money to pay for that sign. A piece of metal put in the parking lot could have caused my child or someone else's child a little bit soothing, seeing that their parents were recognized. Today, by the grace of God, it's a good day for me. I can't say that for everybody, and everybody can't say that for themselves, but what's probable. So I got five minutes. I hope I only took one for time. I hope you guys can think about this and reconsider and understand that it is a simple decision, and it doesn't need to be thought about. I think your answers are right here in front of just very few veterans from your very own community.
Next up is Mr. David Zielinski from 17 Lake Forest Drive.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? First of all, I wanted to speak to the board with regards to them arriving at the approved budget as formulated. It was a hard-won process that began in December. I want to commend them in arriving at a budget that I believe is going to be quite palatable in the community, so I commend you for that. What I did want to speak to was the budget process per se. We were encouraged as a community to come out and participate and hear what the budget process would look like. And I was an active participant from a listening standpoint, having been trying to discern what you guys were up against and how you're going to arrive at your final numbers. The one comment or suggestion I would make for the future would be, having these meetings because of the way you had yourself configured at various schools where we have these meetings, would be the use of microphones. It was very difficult, for me anyway, to hear what was being discussed amongst you as a group, with the opportunity and the desire to kind of really learn what you're up against. It was difficult for me to learn that. So in the future, I would suggest that microphones, to its fullest potential be used. And while I'm on the subject, I talked about this when I was on the school board, to use a better system for the televised version of your meetings as well, because it's... I watch these meetings when I'm at home, and it's very difficult to discern what you're talking about against full-level frustrations where I end up turning it off. So I encourage you to go back to something I talked about many years ago when I was on this board. So that's the other thing. The other thing I wanted to speak to again in the budget process was the way I felt we were shut out as a community from participating in the budget process. The encouragement was there to come out to the meeting, which I did, but there was never the open opportunity, perhaps even just at one session, to have the community hear their feelings and certain things that you were talking about. A lot of it, which of course, unlike me, was aware of what it was, some of the stuff that you speak to is, you know, it's almost difficult to understand unless you've been there. But it would have been nice, basically, to have input from the community. And now that the budget has been approved by the district, it kind of shuts the community out from any active participation through the process since it was encouraged over the years to participate. So I recommend that as a solution, that down the line, at least one opportunity during your board sessions, that we have the opportunity as a public to just voice our concerns to what you're talking about in those meetings, okay? And finally, I was a kind of blindside as to what was going to occur tonight, and I wanted to mention sort of my two cents with regards to the policy with regards to this parking issue for veterans. My dad was a veteran of the Korean War, and I had two uncles that were prisoners in war in World War II, so I have extreme respect for veterans. However, being a part of this board as long as I did for the three years that I served on it, then I commend Mrs. Christopher for her desire to show veterans the respect that she did. Ex-Mrs. Christopher was my vice president as I served as president a few years back, and we worked well together. And I want to commend her on that. However, because I wasn't on this board, I know through all the various executive sessions that we held, that society is very litigious that we live in. And I think it's prudent that the board step back a little bit, not necessarily look to implement this decision in July, but to make sure that you work with your council, to make sure that things are done properly. You know, there's other groups that are out there that we talked about, perhaps pregnant mothers would like a spot. That's another issue that we might have to raise as a result of this. I just think it's prudent that the board step back, take a look at going that we live in a litigious society, and choose your keys crossed, hitchhiker's dot.
Next up is Mary Donhauser, 45 West Home Road.
No. I'm not allowed to. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Go closer to the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Name's Mary Donhauser, live at 45 West Home Road, and I'm going to speak about the veteran parking spot. I don't know, Mr. Uteck, if you know I'm a veteran. I'm going to tell you what a veteran is. Whether they're active-duty, discharged, retired, or reserve, it's someone who at one point in the midst of her life wrote a blank check to the United States of America for an amount of up to and including the midst of her life. I am a veteran. I served 23 years. I have seen what you would never see in your life. I am quite dumbfounded that you five board members came up with some lame excuses at the last meeting as to why there shouldn't be a parking spot. We are talking one parking spot at each school, but I didn't expect anything else. Maybe you don't realize you didn't just offend me, but all veterans. And please, do not insult us by calling us a group. We are a unit, and until you put on a uniform, you would not and could not understand the bond that the military has. You sit up there expecting the community to accept what you say. Last I knew, we live in a democracy. You were elected to work with the community, or did I find out differently? I feel you five should take a walk through the VA hospital. Look at the heartache, the pain, the dying, the end results of war. These are the true warriors. And maybe, just maybe, you would open your eyes. As you sit there and stare at me, I wish I could lash out and tell you what I really feel, but you are not worthy of that. In fact, I am here to speak up to my brothers and sisters in the military. You have displayed conduct and conduct, excuse me, that made me feel that you are not... that you are superior. There's only one superior being, and that is God. With that, I am damn proud of my service. I did what you five did not do: defend this country and help a dying soldier who blood bred. Have you? To all my brothers and sisters, I commend your service. I come here to say what I needed to say and don't want to hear any excuses. You sit up there and tell people what you think, criticize them. Don't do this to this veteran or anyone else who's a veteran in here. As a side note, I had better conversations and disagreements with colonels and generals who show much more respect than you five. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Andrew Fallow, 327 Argus Drive.
Hello. I have a couple of questions regarding social media. First question is, does the district have their own official Facebook and Twitter accounts? And my second question is, what is the district's policy on the use of employees' personal social media accounts during working hours? Do we have a policy in writing, or are we developing a policy regarding that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fallow. Someone will get back to you with answers to those questions. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public hearing.
Are we on this meeting? I'd like to make a comment.
Mrs. Christopher, this is...
I know, I know.
Our meeting is over. I'm looking 14.0. We don't have any future presentations planned. 15.0, could I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Sold. Thank you very much for coming. Our next meeting is the annual budget meeting in May 9, 2016, in Lancaster High School.